This evening, we're gonna call to order. Please stand for the fight of the evening. So, manager, please, do a roll call.
Council vice president Bernice Clark Dickerson.
President.
Councilor Douglas Eager.
Here.
Councilor Beth Ann Johnson.
Here.
Councilor Michelle Miller.
Here.
Councilor President Chantay Miller.
Here.
Councilor Michelle Roberts.
President.
Councilor Walter Stubbs.
Here.
Mayor Amanda Havick.
President.
Our motion to approve Jeffrey Brown as our Sergeant of the Morton Police Department. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, for everybody in the community, as well as all you officers probably know this background, but I just wanted to share with the members of the board as well as the community, how excited we are here with the Morton Police Department that Jeff will be joining us as a Sergeant for the Police Department. I think that it's gonna assist us with bringing the department to new levels. And it's also gonna be a great win for the community. The town deserves that good Police Department. We've always had a good Police Department and we're continuing that tradition by bringing Jeff home as a Sergeant here. So Jeff's background, he recently retired after a career with the African Township Police Department. And then served as a detective at the Chester Township Police Department. Jeff's duties as an officer have included control, detective, sergeant, and training officer. He has been a member of the Central Delaware County Tactical Response Team, the SLOP team, for twenty-four years. And he has served as the commander since two thousand and eighteen. Jeff is currently an instructor at the Delaware County Police Academy, sharing his knowledge and skills with our future officers. Now, Mary.
You practice? You've done this a few times, so. I.
I.
Jeffrey Brown.
Jeffrey Brown.
You solemnly swear that I will support.
You solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances of the Borough of Morton.
Ordnances of the Borough of Morton.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office as Sergeant.
Now discharge the duties of my office as Sergeant.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you.
You gotta reach over here. Be safe, we appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
God bless.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thanks for your opportunity. Got it, appreciate your opportunity.
I was gonna say, would you like this name?
Yeah, we'd like to say it. Thank you for the opportunity.
You brought, you brought it to be sizable. She's grabbing pictures. Forget about them, come on in. Usually take them outside so everybody can get their stuff going on. That's me. Why bring them all outside?
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's all good.
But they can continue on. Thank you. Thank you.
You want to wait for the mayor to come back in or you guys?
Get your picture taken with him?
I'm gonna go out in a second.
Okay.
Okay, we now have any announcements? Eventation. This evening, we're gonna move on to public comment. Mr. Heffner.
So, after five seventy-one South Old Milltown Road, VFA. I have mobile businesses and properties here in Morton. On the beginning of January, I wrote to President Council Miller, my thoughts about the sewer and trash. Earlier, I placed a request for information regarding what is past due for twenty twenty-four and then twenty twenty-three going back to twenty eighteen. And I received back the amounts owed from twenty twenty-three going back. I don't have this twenty-four number yet. But the total for trash and sewer is five hundred thousand thirty-seven dollars eleven cents. And when we had Mr. Woodward here a couple meetings ago, he mentioned we're in the hole by three hundred thousand dollars. And we had to raise sewer fees. Well, we did raise sewer fees. Unfortunately, some people didn't go all the way up to the max, which I appreciate. But I'm also looking at the way the books are set up. We just didn't have the information to make good decisions. For example, these sewer fees should be listed as receivables in the book. Or when we write a check out to, let's say, a grant and we're prepaying it, that amount should be listed as a receivable coming back in. The reason for that is council is always changing. And that's a nice thing in the fact that, you know, new people have experiences that can help the community. But when they get on board, if they don't know this application, what is owed and what it is going to get back in, we can't make a logical decision and make. We can't really help out the community because right now we're just guessing in who will win. And my question is, is I think in January, we're allowed to make some changes. Maybe we don't raise the sewer up to sixteen fifty, but back down to where it was and make a conscious effort to collect the money. I did write to the Council President and she mentioned that she will address my question at this meeting, which I truly appreciate. And I truly hope that we work together to get this community on track and go after all these deadbeats that owe us money. A half million dollars, a lot of money over the years. And we also do have ordinances on the liquid accounts in our borough ordinances. Or in us collecting fees. Like, for example, if we give a three-month payment plan, we can charge twenty-five dollars. More than three months, we could charge fifty. We can charge a hundred and sixty dollars because we have to write a letter to the different deadbeats to collect. And I'm thinking that it should be done. And I will know later, we should send a letter out saying this is what is owed. And we're going to charge ten percent interest because that's what the borough is calling for. That we can do that and say, here's what is owed. And if you don't pay, we're gonna whack you a hundred and sixty dollars in whatever else fees by a certain date.
Okay, thank you.
That's my questions.
Oh, we got them.
Wait for your answer.
All right, you can take a seat, we'll go ahead and. I think Bernice wanted to answer it actually.
So should I stand here or should I sit down?
You can take a seat.
Okay, so you want. Jack two was fine and.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead then.
Well, okay, thank you, Mr. Heffner. I was questioning some things and everything and I got clarification on that. Numbers have gone out to all the liquid accounts. They went out in December. As of December, we've had over ten thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars come in and they're still coming in. We asked everybody, they had till January the thirty-first to make their payments or come in and ask our plan or it's going straight to Portnoy. That's being put into place. And we have to remember, this was done from, we're looking at all those years in between of the twenty-four. So, again, we inherited this. We jumped right on it once we found out what was going on. We also told you there were some fees that were not accurate accounts. And people were coming in questioning and everything going through that. So then working comparing with Unilever and what we had on file. So that's what we're doing. But we're moving towards, we're not a debt collector. They're here to pay the liquid accounts if they're not able to do it or they're not coming in and responding, they're going straight to Portnoy. So we are moving forward with that because council agreed to do that. And that's what we're moving towards. But it took that much time to really dwell in and find out what's really been going on. And you're looking at over seven years.
So we're talking the five hundred thousand and we only have received ten thousand so far.
Yes, and now.
And the other concern I have is when the Mr. Woodward was here, he says our collection rate for this is a little more than eighty percent is way down, which is scary right now because it's getting worse. So, the plan is, this stuff is being turned over to Portnoy by January thirty-first for collection. And then after they do their magic, which is probably a month or two, what do we do after that? What is the plan to collect the money that they can't get?
Well, that's when the.
Once it's turned over to Portnoy, the borough doesn't have a role in the collection of those. Those funding. It's all in the hands of Portnoy.
So, Portnoy, let's say I owed five thousand dollars to the borough for sewer. And they turn me over to Portnoy and I tell Portnoy to pound sand, what happens at that point?
Portnoy will file a lien and Portnoy will, at some point, we're closed.
So that will, what is the timeframe for that to occur?
We don't have a time for it, but we have to move, it's a process, right? So like you said, the thirty-first, what you heard, the thirty-first is when it then gets turned over.
Right, gets turned over. The reason why I'm asking is, you know, all this year, prior year, a year before, everybody said you're going to do this.
Well, what did you do last year? Because I know you were involved, I'm asking. No, I'm just, I don't mean to interrupt you, but like, because you had like, you had like answers and I appreciate it. But so you were in the same situation last year, you were. So, you were in the same situation last year, okay? And the year before that, and the year before that. So now we're sitting here with this huge debt that you see, correct? Okay, so, but now, so now, the work, because we had did the due diligence, due diligence and looking at the numbers and going through the budget and things of that nature. So now this is what we're, we have in front of us, right? So we're moving forward with going through the process the right way and going through Portnoy. So, I didn't mean to cut you off, but your question is to us, but I ask you, because you were involved, as you said, would it, what happened the year before and then the year before that, the year before that? Because you don't get to five hundred thousand dollars overnight. I didn't address you. I didn't address you though. Michelle, I didn't. I didn't ask you, Michelle, I do care because, but Mr. Heffner made it clear on several occasions that he was very much involved in the budget. So that's why I asked him, because he has these questions, rightfully so. So I'm not taking it. So, but I didn't ask you, so don't interrupt, thanks.
In regards to me being on the Budget Committee for the last couple of years, I didn't, I looked at.
There isn't a Budget Committee, by the way, but you were involved.
I was on last year, the year before. I never had access to what is owed. As I said, there should be a receivable listed. If we had a receivable listed in the PML on the QuickBooks, we could have seen right away, all this money is owed. What I heard was, there's money owed, we're working on it, we're working on it. And even this year, I keep hearing, we're working on it. I've asked it a question several times, probably several meetings, that it's being turned over to Portnoy. Well, finally, it's starting to hit the fan because I asked, how much is owed?
And it was hitting the fan.
I'll be very soon. Later this month, I will get the number for the twenty twenty-four debt of what's, who hasn't paid. But I'm just concerned that we're shooting off the hip because we don't have the information handy. Nobody mentioned that we owe, people owe us a half a million dollars.
But I want you to think about that, though. But think about exactly what you're asking. You just said we don't have the information handy.
That's why I'm here asking for the information. If I didn't ask for the FOIA request, I would not know how much we owe. And I've had a couple of times.
Ask before.
In the prior meetings, how much is owed and nobody had the answer, they would get back.
But why didn't you ask before and then what answer did you get? They didn't give it to you?
Because we didn't have this issue with the sewer question until.
But it was an issue, you just didn't know. So we're gonna move on now and we're following the process.
Any of this information, I would shout out with most of these budget meetings. You know.
But then, but then we get the comeback of how we're not being transparent. But we are. And that's what we're doing, we're trying to let you know, this is where we're at. This is where we're at. And we do need to put the money back. And we do.
So we're big, or are we going to?
So, that's what we're gonna leave it, Mr. Heffner. That's what we're gonna leave it tonight, but we gave you a lot and that's where we are. And that's where we're gonna leave it, we're gonna move on. I wanna get you as much of the answers as possible, but right now, we really are working on a process, like, right? We really know. Because we were inherited.
Well, again, you've had this whole.
You need to be, Michelle, you're sitting up here with us, okay? So you shouldn't be doing that, okay?
Understand. And one of the things is, we did work on it.
Like, come on.
We feel that I want you to understand that. And as I go into my report, you're gonna hear a lot that's been going on.
That's what I'm trying to say, just, it's a process, just.
I just wanted to know how the timeframe of the process works and how.
We're moving as quickly as we can, thank you, okay?
All right. I'm sorry, I was talking, I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I said, we're moving as quickly as we can and we're working on getting you the answers that you're seeking, so, looking for, okay? It went out, all right? We're gonna move on to our committee reports. Moving on to facilities and infrastructure, Council Beth Ann Johnson.
Thank you. Well, tonight, we have an action item for the resolution to enter a agreement with the Delaware County Land Bank. Everybody should have seen the new filings.
Yeah, this is about the county redevelopment authorities established the land banks. They're asking for municipalities to join any land bank, which would give you the opportunity to take or to have properties placed in the land bank. If you identify them on tax sale lists. And then they would have a, you know, a strategic approach to trying to get them redeveloped and look back and be good, good use. There's no cost to enter the land bank. There are some costs if you decide that you want to actually have a property removed from the tax sale that you put into the land bank, but upfront, there are no costs.
So, Mr. Heewald, is this the situation you had on the House on Kenneaton? Where we were the first ones, at least in, I think in, in the county, maybe, to use that program?
So this is a separate program?
Right, right. But what are the differences between the two?
So, the conservatorship programs for vacant and abandoned properties. And the, you know, it, it actually is a program where if you have a conservative who's willing to do the work, you can petition the court to take control of the property and bring it back in compliance with the codes. This is this is more of a passive program, but it's also aimed at alleviating like where the land bank acquire properties and the land bank then would sell them to developers when there's an opportunity to do so. Not the borough. Not the borough.
But, but we would still garner money from that.
So ultimately, no, so, well, we don't really garner money directly from either program, but ultimately, if it's a non-productive, non-taxpaying property, you know, you're not getting anything out of it. And then when someone redevelops it, then it's returned to an active status on tax bills and then when the borough indirectly does start making money off it again.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Nope.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
I do have a question, I'm sorry about something else. What's going on with the four twenty stoplight from the last meeting?
So, I don't know, I just got an email actually from Charles. But it looks like, I don't know what the SEPTA has agreed, Council Miller, to pay for the the work that's gonna be done. We got that in writing, an email I got the other day from the chief of staff from Senator Carney's office, that SEPTA has agreed to pay.
Well, that's good.
We're working on all the permitting and things like that, Charles worked on that. Hopefully it'll get done in the next few weeks.
Well, that's a good answer, thank you.
Today, you agree to pay everything and so.
Well, that's something we're working on.
Yeah, we're working on that right now, so we're kind of like. I think it's possible that it's gonna be good to be great, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right, thank you, Beth Ann.
Thank you.
Moving on to Finance and Administration, Council Vice President Bernice Clark Dickerson.
Good evening, happy years everyone.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, so this is the recommendation that comes out of the Office of Open Records. There was a, there are a number of municipalities in the state that have an issue of an app program that was sending out anonymous multiple rights to know policy requests. And that is violating the way to know whether to move. The questions have, cannot be anonymous. And, you know, so, Office of Open Records recommends that in order to do this, or in order to you know, give notice to the public about the requirement that you must provide your name, then they recommend you adopt policy, they post on the website. This policy also notifying about the appeals process, contact information for appeals and the fees and, you know, basic elements of where the right to know the process procedure is. So, it's just the best practice and recommendation from Office of Open Records. It's improved, you know, the policy.
Thanks, man. Next one, my party is twenty-five, you will be present for the council project.
Yeah, so I just wanna say that the reasoning for this reorganization is because I'm sure a lot of you know, the new council stepping in, including myself, came in with little to no knowledge, but really just jumping on for my community and what I wanted to do to give back. I brought my kids here, I was born and raised here and it was important to me to get on council so that I could truly get back to the community. When we got sworn in and I decided to step in, it was for change and seemingly just for the better. With that being said, Bernice stepped up, really did a lot of the work. Came together, we met with several community members and really just was looking to just do the best for the community. And with that being said, I made the decision to nominate Bernice as our twenty twenty-five Borough Council President. And with that being said, that's what I'm looking to do. And I do believe we should have a roll call to go ahead and get the reorganization in place for the Borough Council President. So, I'm making the motion for the reorganization of the twenty twenty-five Borough Council President. I'm gonna stop him.
Second.
Okay, so, manager, I'm gonna ask for a roll call for this, please.
Council Bernice Clark Dickerson.
Yes.
Council Douglas Eager.
Yes.
Council Beth Ann Johnson.
Yes.
Council Michelle Miller.
No.
Council Chantay Miller.
Yes.
Council Michelle Roberts.
Yes.
Council Walter Stubbs.
Yeah.
Mary.
Congratulations.
Yes, yeah, thank you. With that, we will need to now replace our vice president position.
The motion. I make the motion for Chantay Miller as Vice President.
We have a second?
Second.
And I make the motion for Michelle Miller as Vice President.
Okay, so we do a roll call once again, please?
Yeah, the process when there's multiple, if the first person nominated, when we go up and down and if it's a successor and you don't go any further, it's not, that's what you need to do.
Oh, so we're good.
So now you'll have a vote.
A vote, that's what I was asking for, yes, okay, so.
Thank you. So this will be for, for me.
Yes, and I think.
Council Bernice Clark Dickerson.
Yes.
Council Douglas Eager.
No.
Council Beth Ann Johnson.
Yes.
Council Michelle Miller.
No.
Council Chantay Miller.
Yes.
Council Michelle Roberts.
No.
Council Walter Stubbs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was my report. I would like to read my report for year review for two thousand twenty four. And what's been going on. And as we said, there were so many issues and concerns with that. Excuse me.
This is me, so.
Okay, our Morton Borough Finance and Administration year in two, two four, A review. Upon new council members coming on board and being sworn in and restructuring of council and committee chairs. The Finance and Administration Chair completed. A full review and overhaul of all components of the borough's administration and finances. That consisted of a new model that everyone starts first, that means all employees here. And this is a new beginning as in the departments because of the push determining. The employment of the Borough Secretary of Facilities Lead Person. Which lacked cause and was being pushed by one previous council member and one present council member. Upon review, there was noted not to be a due cause for such a decision. Due to the non-existence of job performance evaluation. Job write-ups, job doing uh, um. Improvement, job performance plans. There was nothing in any part for that. So, the last time we found something was for two thousand and eighteen. As I said, the full review of the Administration Office and Police Department with the assistance of the Chief and Mayor. In regards to files, personnel policy, job, employee jobs duties. And their wages along with the actual needs of the borough was done. This not, this did not take place overnight. It took several months, several days to several weeks. Of due diligence to go into and review and meet with staff individually and go through all the files that was needed. A comparison search was done on borough job positions. And a competitive wage to go with the position within the borough was completed. An actual time and workload study was done as well. Council was informed of the review and concerns along, excuse me, with our solicitor. With the exception of one council person moved to advance the continuous review and rectify the staffing situation concerns. Along with voting to write competitive wages, salaries for the Borough Secretary and Lead Facilities person. Challenging the fact that the previous misconceptions were non-existent. Present staff now assist uh, the Borough Secretary, Facilities, Facilities Lead Person. Um, and then voted, and with voted by the majority in council again. With the exception of one council member, the raise the rage, wage for both. The secretary and the um, facilities person for twenty-five hours an hour, they give a competitive way. That is going throughout board, that we did within the whole Delaware County and um, surrounding community. Looking at what was there. Also, the need for additional staff was reviewed and voted on to hire a Treasury Finance Director. A part-time Assistant Secretary and Assistant Full-Time Facilities Person by the Finance Administration. At their recommendation. A full review was also done concerning the management staff and actual needs of the borough. There was again at the deep consideration and being informed that the position only needed a body in place. To terminate the two employees that were here at the borough. And other jobs could be done by the previous administrator. If they just wanted a body in the position. Um, and under deep consideration and review again, it was the best interest of the borough. To part ways with the management staff and move forward with what was the best interest of this borough and going through in the new year. Due to the lack of internal control and oversight of previous administration, which resulted in. No clear management oversight and delegation of job duty and roles. And two years of audit findings. The lack of follow-up documentation, signed agreements and contracts could not be found. Upon the committee contacting and questioning actual documentation, none could be found by vendors or. Borough employees and the documentation was generated after. We contacted and the word got out that we wanted information. We wanted signed contracts, we wanted agreement. We did, in fact, have some people just tried to. Give us a document that was after the fact and backdated it. That was not acceptable. We did not accept that. Um, as we continue on, one of the things we looked at was. Brands, as Mr. Heffner talked about tonight, and also the books. What was being done with the ledger and everything. We wholeheartedly agree with them. And that accurate accounting for all brands and their money to receive was not being done. Um, people were, breakers was brought in and recommendations from breakers was not even followed. One of the things was that we found with breakers was with the exception and uh, approval council. They brought them in at a hundred dollars an hour to do all of the accounting and treasury work. And we inherited that. So what happened was, we also found that a previous council member had placed in the budget, removed breakers. But placed themselves in fact into a position. At forty dollars an hour. That, again, was not acceptable at that point. Because of the previous problems that was going on. So we continued to go through and look at everything. And documentation, as I said, was not found. We were the laughing stock, Morton Borough, because we were known as the absentee manager. We didn't know where he was or where he was going and people, vendors, other borough members outside of Morton. Constantly was calling and asking for follow-up. There was no follow-up. There was at times when I came in and had to get on the phone and follow up and do the questioning what was going on. So, one example of vendors that was doing and there was no oversight was for, with the Greenways Grant. We spent a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-six dollars to date. Out of a hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant. Out of that grant, eighteen thousand, a little over eighteen thousand was for the goats. The rest went to Strawberry Trees, forty-four thousand. Over forty-four thousand, I think it's sixty, I don't have it in front of me, I have it here. I wanna give you the right amount. Went to Strawberry Trees, forty-four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Out of that forty-four dollars, forty-four thousand and eighty fifteen. There was no oversight for them as to what to be cut down, what was gonna happen with the timber. They were piecemealing the borough. They were charging the borough to cut down the trees. Then sent a separate invoice of six thousand nine hundred dollars for over five times. For them remove the trees once they cut down. At the suggestion of, again, that was another business we had no contract on. And they were just doing it. So, again, they came up with a. Invoice for one time, and that's what they had, but it was after the date that we questioned it. So, um, and they put the information in the timeframe that they actually did it. They only did that because we kept asking for invoices and information on what's going on and what they were actually supposed to be doing. And they weren't responding to us. So we asked the meeting, the committee asked for a full meeting, which they finally came in and they showed up with something. And we knew it was totally out of order. And we said that. So what was, at that point in time, we stated that um, we would pay out the very last invoice. And then if you wanted to do business with the borough, you would need to do a proposal. At that point in time, and we looked at it and considered it, diverting it to the borough. We did not get it. Excuse me. So at that time, we still had a bunch of log cities, sacred woods. That was not being moved, was not gonna be moved unless we paid them additional sixty-nine thousand. Or contract we didn't really have. And at the suggestion of Mr. Stubbs. He had mentioned that despite some people who might wanna move the wood or need it for fireplaces or whatever. And the concern was there for the insurance. Because they were coming on borough land and we wanted to make sure the rights people had their proper insurance. So there was one business man who collected three businessmen and he utilized his business insurance. To go down, chop down, or cut down the rest of the wood over a sacred wood, woods right up there. Where you, everybody saw it as you rode by. And uh, they moved the uh, wood free of charge. We had everything on file. It's like Mr. Stubbs coming up for that suggestion. Um, we also wanna say that. I wanna talk about. Okay, at the beginning of the new year, we asked that everybody who was employed by the borough. That all pay in to give their reports at our regular meetings, the tax collector, the treasurer. The fire chief, the fire marshal. I felt, and I said to everybody, if they're receiving a check and they're employed by the borough. They're gonna come in and give their actual report. And that has been done every meeting. Unless sickness or they could not make the meet for a reason, but everybody would put on notice and they actually came there. We found that the borough had active lawsuits and that the majority of the council. And not even our solicitor knew about it. Uh, we immediately made our legal representative aware of the situation and the active suit. And that there was another suit that was settled before January of two thousand twenty-four. We um, bitching, as you've heard throughout, Mr. Bollin coming in and talking and asking questions and saying we weren't. Doing our duties, we were dialectic. I always brought it back to Mr. Girl, Mr. Bollin. Ask yourself the question. Ask yourself the question. We inherited this. This is what we were trying to do and clear up with everything coming in here. I wanna go into the two hundred and fifty thousand sixty, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar debt. This is how I spoke about previous meetings in November. And we found that it was placed in a general fund with a way near thing. And it was A up in the general fund. We don't know where, what, what's going on. What happened was with breakers is, breakers would get an invoice in. And she would question, where should I put this? What does it go under? And she was told, oh, stick it here. So we had funds being invoiced, being put to recreation. That should have been in infrastructure. We had in communication that should have been in recreation. So this is what we were all in nuts and everything trying to get it straightened out. So with the hiring of our new finance person, that's one of the things, we're working on all the work and getting it. And we're still finding things. We're still uncovering stuff. Um, that we're trying to do. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, that was the COVID money?
No, the COVID money was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars that was placed in Citadel. Two sixty-five would be um. That via small water grant.
As I said, it was thrown into line items and they just did whatever they wanted to do with it. Breakers was removed as soon as possible. I wanna thank this, I really thank breakers. For filling in and doing what they did with their due diligence because. We weren't able to make heads and tell anything, but we're able to pull up as much as we can. As soon as we're able to remove her, I let her supervise her, her um, agency now. We were removing them from the borough. They didn't have a contract. So, that was another thing. And I um, let them know within a month's time we will be removing her. Who was assigned to our office and we did do that as of October. We were able to um, upon interviewing for our fiscal person and also for every position. Every position was rated by every council member. They gave their input, they decided yea and nay whether they wanted to move forward, whoever went through. Then we went to the individual staff that they would be under and asked. You make the decision. Who do you feel comfortable with? It was never my intention or my character that would say you had to hire somebody and they were gonna be put in. That was sent to an email to a member of the audience that did not know. This council member emailed me as well, saying I was pushing it on. That's why questions were coming up. That never happened. I document everything, everything. And we had documentation and it's in the file, ratings and everything. So we need to be clear on what happened. As I said, we continued on this little nice year. With the opposition of certain select few. And it's the same few. That's the sad part. They come and say, oh, it's gonna be fireworks tonight. Oh, we're gonna do this. That doesn't work. I am not intimidated by you. I am not intimidated by anybody. I want everybody to understand, as was stated. And I'm not gonna go into it much because we try to keep it where you're not gonna know everything. But when people are let go, they're done for a reason. Common sense, we have a lawyer up here. Things don't happen just to be happy. Okay, I would like to make it clear. To everyone here that on December the thirtieth, it was stated, and I quote, that's why we had a stroke. Because you overcomplicated the sewer bills when it was not complicated at all. I would like you to let me know, Mr. S- Mrs. Amina, that's not why I had a stroke. I want you to understand, I have a full life. I'm very involved in my community and outside this community. I'm very active. I have a loving family. That's not why I had a stroke. I want you to understand, Morton Borough did not fit my armor. I come fully suited and you are a little, little man. As they say in Philadelphia. And Mr. Jimmy Stewart, I want you to understand that. I would also like everybody to understand, I don't mean this in your stature, but you understand. I hope you have to, you will never have to experience the stuff I had to experience. Never, ever. And I don't wish it on anybody. So as I told you that night, I'll pray for you and God bless you and then I walk away from you. Okay, as I said, I'm not done talking. Would you please not interfere? Would you please, the media is not being adjourned at this point. Thank you. As I continue on. I am so much better. It took me two months. Two months of recovery, two months of therapy, two months where I wasn't able to lift this hand. But look at me now. I'm better, I'm stronger, I'm more efficient. And I know I'm more determined to do what this borough has to do and what the people who voted me in to do this job. Things have to stop what was going on. No more as it was before. No more, no more. As I said, as I said. The meeting has not been adjourned. We're not having a comment. Okay. As I said, I am determined and ever more so to do right by the borough. As the Finance and Administration Chair and now President, I said it, Vice President, but now President of Council. As the residents require me to do. One thing, Clifford and Fanny Clark, my parents taught me. And I learned along the way was not to entertain fools or idiots because you do not. Want people to guess and try to figure out, well, which one is the fool or idiot? They also instilled in me to hold my head high and stand on my principles, my morals, values. And because my character will outweigh all the negative darts and comments thrown. and because my character will outweigh all the negative darts and comments thrown at me. And to show them that I am a confident black woman who they raised well. You see, again, I have a blessed, filled, great life with a loving family. And this borough ain't putting a touch on me. As I said, you don't dip my armor. You don't worry me. I am not intimidated. And as I said, the stroke didn't dip my armor. It made me more stronger. So I leave you with this. I have never met a bunch of people, and that, when I say bunch, I want to say a select few. It's a select few. Who do not want to know or hear the truth. But this was exhibited in several meetings throughout this year, and the attacks that came towards me and also to our president was outstanding. Um, I am adamant that the truth will not be denied. And as I said, transparency will be done, and we continue to be transparent and let you know what's going on when we can. All right, and information that was now that you give the year in review, and I did it. Okay, due diligence, I will continue to work and sound alarm if it needs to be done. I will continue to call our councilmen who are not being appropriate and doing things that need to be done. Just like the council member, we had to file, we had a lawsuit, an attempted lawsuit for harassment against a council member that we had to hire extra lawyer because of, Mrs. Todd spoke of that in the November meeting. So these things we need to be aware of and understand. These things don't just happen under a bush. They're happening. We have to be aware and hold each other accountable. Myself again. Why? Why? Would people not want to know the truth or deny the truth when it's given to them? We had an auditor here and they still deny it. I even heard the person say they don't know what they're doing. I even was told when we got the order in the findings, and I mentioned the findings, well, you don't have a finding, you don't have an auditor. Fake people think. The key object is that. The problem is the light has been shown on all, all of the problems that was going on with the borough. That's where the opposition comes in. We brought it out, we're saying it, and we're saying, look, something has to change. I want to take this time to thank Councilman Eager for participating in the financing committee. Um, who stood in and stepped up and was doing some of the calls to the vendor and the contractor and finding out what was going on. Shot President Chantae Miller, who was supportive of everything going forward and constantly told and being aware of everything. Councilman Walter Stubbs, Mayor Handit, Chief, the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, Brinker Staff, the Office Staff in-house here. That, and then our finance person and our new manager for coming in because they didn't understand and didn't know what they were walking into and agreed to stay. And I want to take and say thank you very much, Jack, especially at the last meeting. Thank you very much. I want to leave everybody with this, that there will be no longer lack of management or oversight within this borough. Again, each person has a committee, they are the chaired committee, and they are to understand what they're supposed to be doing and knowing. There is upcoming conference in June. If you don't know or you think you're rusty, let us know. Jack will be sending out email asking any member that is interested in going to that um, training, that um, conference in June, or do the boot camp training. You'd be surprised what you learn that you can come into. I, as we get ready to celebrate Martin Luther King Day, I want to say, and I hope everybody takes it to heart, the ultimate measure of a man, woman, is not where he or she stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he or she stands in times of challenge and controversy. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you.
Next will be Public Safety Report.
Thank you. I think uh, Paul will touch on the resolution we brought in as destruction of the police department records.
Yeah, so um, as a public entity, whenever you're going to destroy records, there's a policy uh, that's set forth by the Pennsylvania Museum of Historical Commission uh, in which you, uh, as a borough adopted uh, in twenty eighteen, on May tenth, twenty eighteen, as your own policy, which is provides what the time periods are for when uh, people can um, or when documents can be destroyed. Um, and maybe one of the policies is where you get a resolution together which identifies what documents are going to be destroyed. So police departments asked to um, have you approved this resolution? It's just to get rid of old uh, obsolete files and clear out a lot of space in the department.
Thank you. The next um, item was the swearing of our new sergeant. Um, who is now left, but congratulations again. I think I may be able to speak for all of us in saying we're very excited with this next move and what he brings to the department.
Moving on to public health and sanitation, you're right, Mike.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, there's nothing on the report other than I do want to make the residents aware that I noticed that the containers have been quite full for the past couple of weeks. Last week I came up and they were filled twice. And as of this evening, it's overflowing, so we do recognize the residents for this effort. And once again, I think as stated in our last meeting, still looking at the sewer issue, I mean, I know as a resident myself, I was more concerned about putting that measure of nineteen-something onto the residents. So it was my persistence to try to at least go to a minimum of sixteen fifty. And I think as we still review things, possibly, I mean, it may not happen this year, but next year we'll be able to hopefully go back down in our number. Yes, so.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Done?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to lower ordinance, ordinance.
Yeah, I have, uh, there's nothing listed and um, chief's not here. I, so if he, when he comes back in, if he has anything to like to add, I'd like him to do so at that time. No, thank you.
Um, is there an ordinance for the parking on Baker Street?
Um, that, well, everything, I, that was one of the ones that the chief and I had talked about. I don't know what um, we, we haven't come up with all the details. Um, is there a problem? Something to think of it?
Yeah, the borough's like a company or it's drive down, you do the parking on both sides.
On both sides?
Yeah.
Um, because Jen, what was so, that was on what the hundred block, two hundred block?
Um, and it's right where the, right at the beginning of the street where an ad-hoc video.
Oh, right at Morton Baker. That's unusual. Anybody even parks in that side.
It's been happening. We talked about it before and how they were going to um, implement ticketing because you could never, you could never park on the right side of the street ever. And their signs would say no parking, so I'm not exactly sure why that's.
Turning off of Morton Avenue, right?
Yeah, the whole, yeah, the, yeah.
If you look in, if you look in the history on the church of First Baptist, it's legally parking on both sides on Sunday.
On a Sunday, but not on Baker at all.
Yeah.
Um, well, on Baker, I would think that, for instance, on the left as you come off Morton, there's the townhouses that have um, going driveway, so of course you're not going to park there because we block the driveways. On the other side, um, the people that live across from those, they don't have a driveway, so west uh, on the, on the east side of the street. On the west side, there'd be, there would be slow parking, and that's what she was speaking about, correct? So that's something to ask the chief about. I mean, that's, as we, we did talk about this. Well, I'm just saying on hand, I, I can't use your safety because I don't know about the park tickets.
Yeah, so it's a matter of enforcement. Good.
Oh, that's, all them.
Thank you.
Moving on to the meeting economic development.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, just two quick items. I don't have any really, really anything on the, the agenda, but um, uh, on the twentieth of this month, if you want to come out, we're going to meet at the Borough Hall for Martin Luther King Day, uh, Day of Giving Back. Um, a couple of items have been floating around, maybe do something at the parks if it's a nice day out. If it's something that's, uh, if it's rainy or stormy, whatever, we might do something in the Borough Hall, but um, we haven't really come to a final uh, agenda yet. But if you want to come out, we're going to meet here at the Borough Hall at nine o'clock. So uh, come prepared to do some work and give back a little bit. Uh, and also February thirteenth is the first of the community and economic development meetings uh, for the committee. So that's at seven o'clock. So feel free to come out if you want to hear what's, you know, maybe some of the items that we have coming up for the summer and fall and things like that. And that's all I have. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. God bless. And my heart goes out to the hundred-year-old president who passed away, Mr. Corning. Parker Recreation, two thousand twenty-five, we're going to start really, really moving. Working with Jack here and trying to stand on top of the uh, grant. I know he will keep me informed, but there are things that we at the Parker Recreation will have to start developing without the grant. A young man named John Stanovic from Morton. He has called me and he spoke with Michelle, I mean, Martha. And he is a inspired young man with connections to seniors playing pingball, I mean, pallet ball, and he wants to utilize the gymnasium. He came up and he measured the floor space on it, and he says, well, the walls will be the alibalance. And but one court alone can be placed in the gymnasium. I'm going to be reaching out and I'm going to be looking forward with the council to help me out as well to develop this for seniors. And then there's a comp, a connection I made with a couple gentlemen who are chess players. They have senior chess players. They have youth training players. So we're going to try to develop a chess team within Morton. We want to try to develop that. Morton is a team. We need to be able to act like a team, develop, push on, and help each other stand up. So that's what Parker Recreation will be doing in twenty twenty-five. And I made to mention once before about, I think there's over two thousand houses within the community of Morton, and I'm going to stick it out there again. There's two thousand homes. In each of those two thousand homes, there's got to be at least three adults who wouldn't mind not buying a loaf of bread one time a month. I'm requesting that if they hear this conversation, if we get the Zoom working right, if we get the Daily Times or the Spirit back in these meetings, they will find out, the public will be able to read it and understand why the request for three dollars and sixty-five cents will develop the park. It will develop the children to become team members of Morton. So when they go to high school, they will understand the process of being a team player. This is what Parker Recreation is all about. God bless you. I'm done.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, very briefly, for those that aren't aware, um, the police department is hiring full-time police officer applications. Marty, do they, do you have them here at the borough? Okay, um, they can be picked up. They're in borough um, hours. I apologize. Um, the deadline is the third of February. The other thing that I would like to is do is give uh, mad props to, was it William that was snowing, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Because I saw, as I, as I was shoveling, I was shoveling my driveway. I saw them go by. So, you know, thank you to William for keeping our streets clear.
Inspurgeon.
Pardon?
Inspurgeon.
Inspurgeon? Yeah. I, I wasn't sure which one I saw. I just waved as they were going by. Um, and they were out. I saw more than one, so I just want to make sure that they know. And please relay it to them that, you know, we thank them for making sure that we can, we and even our emergency services. You have used those words. So that is fully done.
So action items. To approve the resolution of the Borough Ward regarding destruction of police department records? Second. Someone, someone was signing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? Second motion to approve resolution of the Borough Ward to enter an agreement with the Delaware County Land Act to participate with the land act. Can I get a motion?
Please.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
All in favor, sorry. All in, any votes?
Aye. One of those.
Next motion, oh, we did that. Motion to approve the right to know policy. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May oppose? A motion to approve meeting minutes from December, November, August, and July.
Um, I'd like to say I don't think, I haven't had time to review all of them. I, I, the only ones I've had time to review are December and, and there's a couple of, of um, corrections, but I, I'd ask if we could have some more time because I'd like to pull my notes from July and August, November and just look at them personally.
We're going to go on with the motion, and then we're going to ask you with any correction we add to, if any corrections needed can be added at such time. So can I get a motion for approval of those minutes?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May oppose?
Me.
Uh, I ask everybody to pay attention to upcoming events that um, Councilman Eager stated. Our Martin Luther King Day is scheduled on the twentieth, and please come out to the Borough Hall and be ready to work as he said, and he will give a sign us out of where we're going to be going and what we'll be doing at such a time. Pass the word around, you know, youth involved and some of your neighbors. Um, um, offices will be closed on the twentieth, so a lot of people will have off on that day, so we should have, hope to see a whole lot of people coming in. All right, regular scheduled meeting, next meeting is January twenty-second at seven o'clock, here at the Borough Hall. All right, we're going to be moving on to open the special, and we'll have this guy come.
Celia Todd, one ten Outville Lane, Morton, Pennsylvania. President Dickerson, thank you for taking the time to give us the year in review. Um, I wasn't aware, and maybe many people weren't aware. Um, I wasn't aware, and maybe many people weren't aware of the circumstances as to. Why it has taken this new twenty-four council so much time to big into the books. Look for contracts, try to figure out where money was spent. Why, and if it was documented properly. Um, I know that there were lots of questions when there were changes made in your management. And nobody could talk about it, nobody could answer anything, but I knew that there was a lot going on. I have said many times to the dismay of Councilor Michelle Miller, that you inherited a monster. I knew it last year, I knew it the year before, I knew it the year before that, and the year before that. And um, although she'll disagree with me again, um, it's obvious that what went down and what you presented. Is a monster, and it's not done yet. So thank you all for your efforts in trying to get to the bottom of everything. Thank you for trying to keep my taxes at a minimum while no one else does. Um, I appreciate that there may be an opportunity, not this year or next year, to reduce the sewer fees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my family doesn't like two-minute showers, and they don't like not running the, the water when they're brushing their teeth. And um, they're looking for stuff, utensils to use when we run out of um, knives and forks. When they're all in the dishwasher, so um, a lot of people are affected by the changes. Um, thank you for continuing to do good work. Thank you for acknowledging that the money's all messed up. And that you can't continue to do things the way they've been done for at least the last, the last four years prior to your administration. And um, know that some of us really do appreciate and believe that you are being transparent, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the grants, basically, do we know how much is out there that we've received and used? And how much we're going to get in the future? Is there anybody who really has a handle on the grants?
We're working on it and still doing it, we do have, um, we applied during this administration. Um. Two grants right now, though three grants. Um, one the multi-grant that's with um, stepped up the whole community. We also applied for the million-dollar grant for recreation, and we also applied for the um, recycling.
CBDG as well.
Oh yeah, CBDG grant, there was four, and then the recycling grant.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is, we're talking about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar grant, that we spent eighteen thousand on goats.
Mm-hmm.
And forty-four thousand on trees, which leaves fifty-two thousand left over.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be used for parks? Because I know if Mr. Stubbs, he had no funding for this year except for one thousand dollars.
Right, it has to be used for the.
So that's going to be used for that?
Yes.
So, when, when you run over a person's budget, then how does that work? Do you have to vote on utilizing that money, transferring it into that person's account? You know, for example, he has, I say, a thousand dollars.
Right.
And he wants to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on some great project. Even though it's a grant money, does not, does that have to be approved by the council to say we're going to give it to the parks to spend it? For that?
The council has to vote on utilizing it?
The council has to vote on.
The grants specifically say what they represent, when you apply for them, you, you put what details you want to do, you can't take that money and use it for something else.
Okay.
So, um, to answer your question, right now, Mr. Stubbs has so much cash for next year. And that this grant money that's here is already earmarked for specific things.
Okay.
So, and so like, for instance, the mini-pro, which, I don't know if we were reimbursed fifty thousand that came out of that, but that, that's for the forestation. And then there was ninety thousand or so from the greenway, but uh, which includes the goats and um. Some work that strobers did, if that's been reimbursed to the borough, I, 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 I don't know. Um, but uh, the strobers, that, one of the things is, there's a tree study that was part of all of this. From Davies Trees that um, we were going by, and if. That's something that any, any tree person that's involved should look at that, because that's where they were deciding what trees to take down when.
Right.
That's why some of the trees are painted, have a red X, and still need to come down. Um, but I don't know what has been determined about that.
So, is there a way, or you can get an idea from the borough?
Your time is up.
What the grants are, and what we used, what we have as a receivable coming back in?
We will, your time is up, we'll answer um, and review what you said. Your time is up.
Time frame?
Your time is up, Mr. Afternoon, I guess you have a seat right now, thank you.
I was just asking.
We're going to ask you to have a seat right now.
Alright, I'll follow through.
We'll take your interrogation what you said and ask for.
Pardon?
I'll take it for consideration what you said and ask for, we get responding to you. Laurie.
Mario Samino, forty-sixth staff, Morton Avenue, one borough council president for eight years prior to this. The issue I have is that fingers are only being pointed at certain people, and other people are apparently insulated from that. Uh, one of the big complaints that. Um, Ms. Clark Dickerson. Uh, discussed in her speech was that there are borough records that can't be found. The statutory, as Mr. Ewald can confirm, the statutory custodian of records. Statutory custodian of records for a borough, in accordance with the Borough Code, is the Borough Secretary. So my question is, has the, has the Borough Secretary been interviewed as to the records? Um. That.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Samino, we will not discuss personnel issues at this time of work and elsewhere, thank you. So what's your next question?
Um, okay, well. Uh. Council today said that. And they, they said that the policy is. That uh, everything going forward will be placed with Portnoy, but there was no vote on a new policy. So I take it that that's acknowledgement that the policy that's been in place by councils since two thousand thirteen. That those uh, cases were directed by can, those councils in the interim eleven years. Be turned over by the administration, um. I take it you're acknowledging that that can't, that policy has been enforced in all those years in the interim. But uh, was not carried out by the administration.
I don't have, I, I, I was advised in advance of the question of this nature, but ultimately, you know, relying on memory. In twenty twenty, there was a vote by council to suspend sending things to Portoff. In light of the COVID emergency, uh, and that is not, that had not been lifted. Uh, but ultimately, I believe, uh, if the, the payments are due by Ja- January thirty-first. Probably in February, I mean, or you'll, you'll be voting to send uh, the, the years that have not yet been sent.
My understanding after the fact is that twenty nineteen was not placed either.
Right, ultimately before twenty twenty, the policy was, they had, and there, there was. A boat, an, an extra year, so twenty eighteen would have been sent in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen would have been sent in twenty twenty-one. But ultimately, that was suspended uh, in twenty twenty.
Can't do half-truth, you want to do truth, you do the whole truth.
That is.